I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a joint meeting between the City Council, the City of Urbana, and the Town Board of Cunningham Township, which are the same people. And we are gathered to present on Consolidated Social Service Funding Recommendations. Do I need to do a roll call for this meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Who's acting clerk today? Okay. Yes, if the clerk could please call the roll. Or I could call the roll for you.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have Mary Ellis Wu, Ward 1.
Here.
Eric Jacobson, Ward 2.
Here.
Erin Ammons, Ward 3. Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Bill Browden.
Here.
Dennis Roberts.
Here.
Dean Hazen. Jared Miller.
Here.
And Danielle Schentlitz, Supervisor is present, as is Community Development Staff. Are there petitions and communications? I have one petition from Ms. Gloria Yen. Is there anyone else who'd like to address us today? Okay. Gloria, if you'd like to come and just approach the table here. I think the green light is on, and so when you speak, you will be tele... I stopped. Okay. This is a very high chair.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Gloria. I'm from the New American Welcome Center at the University YMCA. The Welcome Center helps immigrants in our community more fully integrate into American society and also prepares receiving communities throughout Champaign County to be more welcoming and inclusive. So by engaging local institutions and mobilizing community resources, we help our...to make our community a place where immigrants can really thrive and flourish. The Welcome Center has really grown out of the strength of the La Lienya Community Helpline at the Y, which equips volunteers from campus and within the community to really support navigational resources, connecting immigrants in the community who may not necessarily speak English as their first language to resources on housing, healthcare, legal assistance, et cetera. And I'm here today to petition for $20,000 to support our welcoming work. So nearly 700 people in Urbana are immigrants. That's about one in every five residents. Some have been here for many, many years, whereas others are still learning about American society and how to access the services that they need while juggling many different priorities. So we serve all immigrants in our community regardless of their status. However, we do focus on helping to improve the quality of life for low-income residents, as many as 30% of immigrants in Urbana. So I wanted to share today just a few snapshots of different ways that the Welcome Center has been serving Urbana residents, or Urbana who are also foreign-born. So we increase immigrant integration with regard to citizenship and civic engagement, for one, by serving people like Mina, who's one of 19 Urbana residents, who is currently enrolled at...in one of our citizenship instruction classes at the Urbana Adult Education Center. The classes bring together students from all over the world, whether that's the Democratic Republic of Congo, or from China, also from Mexico. Mina was actually our first student to pass the citizenship test just a few weeks ago, and she'll take her oath of citizenship later this year. And studies illustrate a clear connection between attaining citizenship and also economic opportunity, and so we're happy that our classes are able to facilitate opportunities for both Urbana residents and for the economic well-being of our city. We also serve people like Fernando, connecting him to free legal assistance about a small claim question that he had by partnering with a local private attorney to serve people with questions about DUIs, landlord-tenant problems, court summons, traffic tickets, et cetera. About 75% of the calls that we get to La Lienya with regard to legal issues actually have to do with immigration. And so in response to that, a small cohort of University YMCA Welcome Center staff and also community advocates are working to obtain accreditation from the U.S. Department of Justice to be able to provide limited legal advice and to do things like more simple DACA applications, citizenship applications, and also kind of do education around different updates that happen federally with regard to immigration. We also contribute to the health and well-being of individuals and families in Urbana by serving residents like the Mendez family, along with nearly 100 others with translation and interpretation services in order to help them access their services that they need. So for example, over the course of this past semester, we...our community helpline volunteers spent over 180 hours at the Parkland Dental Clinic in order to help Spanish-speaking patients access services that they could understand and get good quality of care. Finally, we serve people like Irene in Urbana, who's from the Congo, by holding listening sessions led by trusted and respected leaders in different ethnic-specific communities to better understand the experiences and address the needs and gaps in services faced by immigrants in our community. So whether that's the Latina, or the Central African, or East Asian communities, these sessions have really been teaching us a lot about different patterns of racism and discrimination that immigrants are encountering in the workplace and also in the school system here, and helping us to kind of focus more energy on how to increase linguistic and cultural competency, both within our own organization, also with different frontline staff in Urbana. So in all we do, we work really closely with different agencies to strengthen services for local immigrants in a comprehensive and sustainable manner. And we're thankful for the funding that we've received for La Lienya to kind of really resource our community members well, and it really has helped establish the foundation for the welcoming work that we do through the New American Welcome Center at the Y. Thank you.
Great. Any questions from the team?
Yes, sorry.
Go ahead, Mary Ellis.
I'm curious, did you say that 30% of your...of the people that you serve are Urbana residents?
It's variable. I have the number...I can tell you the number. I can't tell you the percentage. I would say it's probably 30 to 40.
30 to 40 people, 30 to 40 percent?
Percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
57 Urbana residents since January 2018.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gloria. If people want like a translation service for other things, let's say somebody needs a translation service to talk to their lawyer, or to a healthcare provider, or something like that, do you guys help with that too? Even if it's...I mean, if it's not Spanish, if it's other languages?
Yeah, absolutely. So Spanish is a language that we have the most rapid access to, but we do have a network of translators and interpreters who can also speak languages like Chinese, and Korean, and French. We do things like take people to court up in Chicago. We accompany people on doctor's appointments. Earlier this week, or last week, we accompanied someone to the Social Security Office because he had a work permit but hadn't yet gotten his Social Security number. We also do things like translate marriage certificates for people who are ready to apply for citizenship, so we do a spectrum of things.
Okay, great.
Eric, you had a question?
Yeah. How do you coordinate with the East Central Illinois Refugee Mutual Assistance Center?
So one of the co...excuse me. Did you want to finish?
No, I was just...well, I was just going to say that your missions are very similar, and...but I'm going to assume, or looking for word, that your relationship is synergistic rather than in any way competitive.
Right, right. So we work really hard to really collaborate well with the different organizations that are operating in this space, whether it's the Refugees Center, or, you know, CU Fair, CU Friends and Allies, assisting immigrants and refugees. Both are...the directors or presidents of both organizations serve on our New American Welcome Center Advisory Board, and we've recently been working really closely with them with regard to a housing collaborative that we've convened to further synergize and centralize communication around refugee relocation efforts in the community. So just to help us kind of compile our shared resources and shared skill sets between organizations to better facilitate donations, storage space, and actual like mentorships of refugees after they relocate to the area.
Any other questions? Dennis?
Yeah, hi Gloria.
Hi.
So you are located at the Y, is that correct? Does the Y help subsidize your program also? Are you partly funded by the YMCA on campus? Or are you independent? Are you just using their space?
We are part...we are a program of the Y. So our...yes.
You're a program of the Y?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Does that answer?
And how many people volunteer? What kind of like...are they mostly students, or are they just a lot of individuals in the community? How many people would you say you can draw upon, or you would count, consider as members?
Okay. Well, over the course of this past semester, we actually...or probably better stated, over the course of the past year, we've trained 52 community advocates, and those are made up from, you know, students on campus who are in the Department of Spanish, for example, or students who just are connected to the Y's mission and want to get involved in social justice and global engagement initiatives. Also, community members, some who have been volunteering for a long time with our community... excuse me, with our community helpline. And so we train our volunteers with regard to things like cultural competency, with regard to case management, naturalization 101, immigrant advocacy, things of that nature, knowing your rights. So I think this semester, for example, with La Lienya Community Helpline specifically, we had 15 volunteers coming regularly in and out of the office on a weekly basis, and then we also have other volunteers on more of a...excuse me, on-call basis, who can do things like help provide transportation or childcare for students in our citizenship classes.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, thanks so much.
Thank you.
So are there any other petitions and communications for the Town Board, a joint Town Board and City Council meeting on Consolidated Social Service Funding? Okay? If not, we'll close petitions and communications. I'm going to pass it to Kelly Murkowski from Community Development to kind of outline your memo, and then we can take it from there.
Yes. So the first page is the memo. We're giving a description and background. What we're asking is to review the attached spreadsheet showing initial funding recommendations, provide feedback to staff, and begin the initial discussion toward final recommendations. We met over several days and reviewed 30 applications submitted by over 21 agencies. We have, after reviewing, have contacted over half of the agencies, asking for additional information from them, which they are submitting to us, and will add and assist us with the final recommendations. So what we did is we have a...two attachments in addition to the spreadsheet. It is a...the guiding principles for the Consolidated Social Service Funding that was originally adopted in March of 2013, and updated based on current council goals and priorities for 18 to 2021, as well as adding township supervisor priorities. And then we also have a standard operating procedure that Grants Management Division put together for scoring of the applications, based on need and capacity and questions that we looked at. And then the final piece is the spreadsheet with the average and the initial recommendations. So with that...
Okay, great. I would just add a couple of pieces. So as Kelly said, we, this year, really worked to make sure that applications were complete, and a lot of the questions we have for agencies because a number of the applications were not complete. So we're kind of helping to raise the bar on our expectations with the applications. The second thing is, in some cases, we're looking to see...we want to...there are organizations that are operating under capacity, and yet they're asking for additional funding. So we kind of looked at percentage of, you know, what they're operating at, what their capacity is, and some are operating at 30%, 40%, 50%, you know, some are at 95%. So a common question was just asking, you know, what...how can you...there obviously is need for every single agency, so what are ways in which we can boost the access for people to the services if they're operating under capacity? A lot of questions came from...we had asked demographic information about board and staff, and in some cases, that was not provided, but in the cases that it was, we asked people if they had an all-white board or staff, what their plans were to diversify their board and staff, which is, just for the record, very, very common in the grants world right now, that the granting world has been asking demographic information for probably about 15 years, and really helping to put it on the radar of agencies that they need to look at diversifying their leadership and their staff. So that is...just to kind of give you a summary, we can certainly answer any questions about specific agency applications. We read through down to the 990. We've spent a lot of time looking over financials and looking over the agency's information. So, you know, I feel like we're prepared to answer any questions you might have about the agencies.
Before we start the discussion, I just wanted to clarify for people. I've had a couple of questions about the actual timeline. The...as your memo states, you hope to have some final recommendations by May 21st. The committee of the whole, City Council Committee of the whole, will actually consider the recommendations at the June 11th meeting, and then would recommend for approval, just to be approved, at the June 18th council meeting, which is the same evening we'd be approving the budget.
Okay. Yeah, and from wearing your Town Board hat, it will be the first meeting in July that we finalize the budget. So there is some time, if you have specific questions for agencies, that's one of the things we can do today, is gather your questions. We can answer those that are available in the applications, but we can also reach out to the agencies. And pretty much everyone we've reached out to has been responsive, and we're setting up phone calls with six agencies, and the rest are just email questions. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion at this point. It is 6:23, and I'll try to keep us on task so that we close at 7, because I think you have a long evening. Okay, so we'll just start down the line. Jared?
Thanks, Danielle. Did you receive an email? I think he sent to everyone from Dural. Could you address some of his concerns about our giving of these funds to other public taxing bodies in towns, such as the Urbana Park District?
Yeah, sure. I responded to Dural today. I wasn't aware that he had emailed the whole crew, because I could have sent my response to you as well. So in terms of taxing bodies, just a little bit of history. The City of Urbana and Township has funded Urbana Park District and Urbana School District in the past. The school district did not apply this year. The park district did, for the same program that they funded, they asked for money in the past. It's a Summer Employment Opportunities Program. RPC is a...correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it's not a taxing body. It doesn't have its own levy, but I don't think it's a 501(c)(3), per se. And so...so Dural had mentioned both of these, you know, that there'd be taxing bodies, and also, he mentioned RPC. So my response on RPC is that essentially RPC is kind of an asset for many governmental entities in the community, and therefore, that's why the heads of these government agencies, including Mayor Marlin, sit on the board of RPC. And RPC is really meant to provide intergovernmental cooperation and support for things like social services, and it's a very heavy hitter in terms of dollars into the community. RPC plays a significant role in community development. So in that way, I don't actually see it as a taxing body. I see it as doing exactly what it's supposed to do. In terms of Urbana Park District, which is the only other entity that applied at this time, generally speaking, I think...my opinion on the matter is that I think that taxing bodies with healthy levies should essentially be funding their services out of their own tax levy. And in the case of the Summer Job Employment Opportunities, the thing I'd raise for Mr. Cruz, and I will also raise it with Mr. Bartlett tomorrow, and I meet with him on another issue, is that essentially, the demographics of their staff in their application is one Asian and, I believe, 28 white staff members. And when I asked in the past, why is it that we are needed to fund jobs for your agency purposes? They said, "Well, it tends to be at-risk youth. It tends to be youth that otherwise wouldn't get jobs with us." And I guess I will argue, and this is my opinion on the matter, is that those youth are youth that you should hire with your tax dollars. And a very important function that the Park District plays, and played when I was a child and plays here, is being young people's first employment opportunity, because there are the Summer Job Opportunities and camps and things like that. So I really think there needs to be a change of frame at the Park District, and I'm certainly will welcome conversation with them about that. I do think in some situations, it may be appropriate for taxing bodies to receive funding for things that are way off their mission, but are important to the City of Urbana and the Township, and it doesn't appear that there's another agency in town that is best equipped to do that. So I wouldn't take it totally off the table, but essentially, I share Mr. Cruz's concerns about that.
Thanks. I'll save other questions for the next round.
Okay. There are other hands? Did you have questions? I'll just go down. We'll just take it down the line.
Well, I'm just going to comment about Regional Planning Commission. I mean, yes, they do a lot of programs in the community. They begin and initiate all kinds of projects and studies, and they have a huge resource of budget. So I think that that should be considered, considering that...we're trying to stretch our dollars very thin here. I don't think that they're wanting, as far as economic duress, and I really support their mission in a lot of ways, and I'm on the board, but I do notice that they have, you know, a multimillion-dollar budget every year, and I think that they would be able to fund a program if they really wanted it.
Bill, did you have questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First, I thought that early on, we talked about potentially making minimum amounts so that it's not a...it's not too hard to manage, just small grant amounts, and there's still some that are under $1,000. I think three that were under $1,000, one that was $1,500. Did you guys consider setting any minimums?
So we haven't, although actually, I agree with that opinion. I do want us to see...so some agencies, like Family Services, have multiple applications, and for simplicity's sake, I'd like to have one contract and one administration of that. And so some of the smaller ones, if you put it, if you look agency-wide, are actually over the 5,000 mark or 4,000 mark, whatever we want to set. I...you know, it's a matter of opinion. We'd certainly be interested in hearing from you, but generally speaking, I think for, you know, grants that are under $2,000, I would prefer to just sweep that money into another pot.
Okay. And then I think another thing we discussed was increasing the number of contractual, or contract for services sort of arrangements, rather than just grants. And so I was wondering if the about 50% increase in Champaign County healthcare consumers would involve a contract for services.
So we spoke about contractual arrangements. I think for...so for next year, I think it would be helpful for us to look at fee-for-service for some agencies where it makes sense, and we're currently in discussion with Mental Health Board because they do have that structure. I think some more investigation is needed before we go formally to that structure. That said, one of the things we discussed, and it's some of the questions we have found to agencies, is, I will give you an example. Meals on Wheels from Family Services, as well as counseling, charges a fee. I think Meals on Wheels is $6.30 for a meal.
$6.70. I think it was $6.70.
Oh, $6.70, okay. And counseling had a sliding scale fee that started at 15. So we are asking the question, if we fund you, can you actually contribute those funds to lowering the cost for Urbana residents? So your Urbana residents would actually pay less, because it's their tax dollars that are going to pay for these services. And the City of Champaign is not, to my knowledge, funding Family Services in the same way. I think that's very appropriate, because they're doing fee-for-service for us to consider to say, you know, essentially, can you show a benefit? I mean, wouldn't it be great if you're a senior citizen living in Urbana, and your Meals on Wheels are free? You know? And so we've asked, how many senior citizens receive Meals on Wheels in Urbana? So we can quantify it, and we could consider maybe a reduction in the fee. A second example is with Siumens Emergency Shelter. We asked them the question, could you be open longer? Which was essentially the question this year as well. They are currently in their application, stating that they're going to open December 1st, which, in my opinion, although I respect everything that they do, for the community is a disaster. It's a disaster to have a shelter that opens December 1st. And they understand that, and they're a wonderful resource to the community, but it comes down to dollars and volunteers. And so they said it would cost approximately $19,000 a month to keep the shelter open. It's more than last year, because they actually realized that they were in overflow almost every day that they were open, they were overflowing into salvation army. So one of the things that we could consider is essentially saying, your contract comes with a stipulation that you'll open November 1st, and we'll give you an amount to allow for that to happen. So that's something we should consider.
That's the type of thing I was thinking.
Exactly.
So you're thinking maybe next year, we would start that, or some of those this year?
No. Those particular things are examples where I think instead of having a rigorous fee-for-service, like a fee-for-service would mean you give that money, or you give that meal to that Urbana senior, and you get $6 from us. That would be a fee-for-service. I don't think we're ready for that. What we are ready for is, hey, we'll give you this pot of money, and in your contract, you're now saying that if you're in the City of Urbana, and you get Meals on Wheels, it's half-price, for example.
Okay. And then I noticed a couple of programs that were missing this year that we funded last year. Actually, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, we've been funding for, ever since I've been on the council, around $10,000 to $15,000 a year, and I was told they didn't submit an application this year. So I emailed it. I emailed the CEO of the Central Illinois Big Brothers, Big Sisters. He said he looked on the website at one point and was never notified. What was the process for...was it just an open call, basically, and it was up to the...
Well, we have a huge email list of like seven or eight groups, and I send them out, plus those who've received funding in the past. So I'm not sure why he was not notified.
Maybe they missed it or something. I know our timing was a little bit later this year. I think maybe three weeks later than usual. So there's a possibility he could have checked in, you know, early March, and we didn't have anything up yet.
It's possible.
Could we check the workshop? I'm almost positive Big Brothers, Big Sisters was represented in the workshop. And so Kelly has the sign-in sheet, and we could check that for you and get back to you.
Okay.
I remember getting questions from Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Maybe I just have a bad memory. I think they were present. Yeah, and generally speaking, I think we sent...there was one other agency that had been funded in the past but didn't get the notice, and it's only because the contact had changed. But if the Big Brothers, Big Sisters contact hasn't changed, they should have received it, because all the past...
I don't know who their contact...he may not have been the main contact. Maybe it did change. I know the local office is run by someone new now, and that's why it's moving to Urbana, the Champaign County office. Also Prairie Center, it's part of Rosecrans now. Did Rosecrans not apply for anything?
No, they did not.
Okay.
Nope.
That's interesting. And then you mentioned Workfair. I'm trying to figure out...I know we encourage all of our funding agencies to have Workfair opportunities. You mentioned something...I think about Eastern Illinois Food Bank. Maybe it's across the interstate and hard for people to get to, because there's a sidewalk that goes across the interstate, but not on down the road to Eastern Illinois Food Bank, although they're on the bus line. I guess actually, I'll save that discussion when we're talking about the Garden, because that's where I thought of that. So that'll be the next meeting, I guess. So as far as the rest...I just have one more, and then...
Sure.
Be quiet. As far as the rest of these, how...do we know who is on the scoring committee? I'm suffering from a little bit of information deficit, although we used to have information overload, so I... overload, so I'm kind of conflicted about, I really enjoy the streamlined process of doing this, but we used to get about 50 to 60 pages on each agency, which was way too much. Now we get about two sentences, and I think maybe there ought to be something in between. But as far as evaluating these, I think we need to make sure that there's, we're transparent, we were transparent in a way before because everybody allocated a certain amount, and that was available to anybody that asked for it, so everybody knew who to blame if they didn't get what they were expecting. So I guess I'm low, I'm interested in who the scoring committee was, and I think you outlined pretty well as far as the scoring process. I don't remember seeing anything about increasing score for, based on amount of volunteerism. I know several of these, especially the food kitchen, the food, like soup kitchen and the shelters, they get a lot of volunteers, and First Followers, I know, has volunteers. Some of the others are pretty, are more run by case, you know, case managers. And I think one of our, one of our good justifications for having the social services program was to kind of amplify the amount of resources we can dedicate to encourage volunteerism. So I was curious if that was in the evaluation process, because I always kind of considered that a little bit when I was evaluating. So if you could just comment a little bit on the process and who the scoring committee was, that would help me.
Absolutely. So the scoring committee was the three of us, so Matt and Kelly from the city of Urbana and myself from township. What we decided to do, even though the funding is disproportionate, so typically, you know, the town board has funded 175, and the city has funded 75 for the last two years, we decided to just have my score weighted twice, and they each have a score, so essentially, there's four scores. And then what you're seeing is the average of those scores without any adjustment at this point. What we did is we used the criteria that's outlined in the process, so we focused on need and capacity as the two big areas. That said, we also looked at the answers to all of the questions. So basically, we didn't, we decided not to ding an agency just because their application was not complete, we decided to ask them to complete their application, so that was one thing that was clear. But essentially, we went through and looked, you know, number of Urbana residents served, number of low-income families served, we did look at executive pay, because that's a big area in this, in this area, in kind of the funding world right now, and I think it's important for us to look at that piece. There were some agencies where executive pay was 10% of the entire expenses for the agency, I think that's a problem. And so I think looking at all of those pieces, we made determinations based on that. The, well, we also looked at what they've been made, what they had gotten in the past, and I know the council has relied on that piece. I would say we relied less on what they got in the past and more on looking at what are the needs right now. Both newer needs that are important, but also old needs, like Meals on Wheels is a good example, and has been around for a while. So trying to do a good balance. One thing, just on the volunteerism piece, is we did talk a lot about leveraging, like, is this agency leveraging our funds to get other funds? Are they leveraging volunteer time? Are they leveraging collaboration? Like essentially, you know, can we make a small input that has a big difference in looking at different leverage points? Is there anything else, Matt and Kelly, you wanted to share in response?
Yeah, I think just talking about leverage points there, it's, from a philosophical perspective, you can think about the consolidated social service fund as a sort of a seed grant that can help agencies that are getting their feet under them to have a reliable funding source and have something that they can use to go out and show other agencies that they can get money as well and in turn grow. And that's something, really one of those main leverage points to keep in mind that we certainly kept in mind when we were looking at applications.
Okay.
And we did keep track of our individually, what we listed that we were recommending individually, so we do have that information as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Marlin, did you have questions? You want me to come back to you? Okay, Aaron, I'm kind of going online. Okay, Eric.
So, one of the other things that Daryl Cruz talked about in his letter, and was something that raised concern on my part also, was religious bodies. And I really don't share Daryl's concern with the food pantry because they clearly don't precelitize, they distribute in other locations other than the church, as well as the church. And there's, the only thing that really connects them to the church is the name, and that's where the initiative came from. But the Champaign County Christian Health Center does explicitly have, in their literature, on their website, a focus on witnessing to their specific religion. And I'm really concerned about whether it goes over the line into precelitization. There's another group, another health center that was started a number of years ago, still going, small, as is the Champaign County Christian Health Center, whose impetus originally came from the mosque, the Abicena Health Center. And they applied to us for several years, we never funded them, I always voted to support them, but there were never enough votes. I think they're very, very good, but they function in an absolutely secular fashion. They do not promote any religious, any particular religious belief. Did Abicena get notice of the process this year?
If they were in the past, they should have also received this notice as well. I can certainly look and check and make sure that we have sent out.
They usually have a representative at the Champaign County Continuum of Care as well, and I made announcements there that that's where, that we were opening the application process.
Okay, I'd like, I happen to think that they're very, very good, and, you know, Naomi and I contribute, you know, on our own privately to them, and so I would hope that they would feel, but they may have become discouraged because of the past experience because they applied, I think, three years and never got funded, so...
Just to speak, so I shared that concern, especially when I was on council, it was significant. And I think in this case, it is worth us following up with a email question. I think you, you know, asking some questions, kind of drilling into, to what extent people who come to the center are approached and asked to participate in a particular faith, and how that's woven in, because it's pretty explicit in our application process that folks shall not be required to. And I think the required part might be soft, like, you know, it's not that we're requiring them to, but we do kind of shuffle up to people. And I actually, when I was uninsured, went to the Christian Health Center and was served, and was asked if I wanted to pray, and also got great service, and actually said, "Yes, I'd like to pray," because it was a pretty serious situation. So, but I think that that does raise alarm bells for us as a private entity, that was a long time ago. So I think it's worth following up. What I will say is, I had a conversation, I just, for the record, our office works very closely with every agency listed here, and at any point, I can answer questions about our experience, you know, in the office, referring folks. With the, with this group, we had a conversation where they kind of asked, would, you know, should they apply? And they talked about where they were looking to expand. And we talked a little bit about the religious piece and what the expectations were. That said, one of the things that came out of that conversation that I think was really encouraging, and it's the reason that I recommended funding them, is that we have a mental healthcare crisis in this community that is significant. And what I asked is, can this grant specifically go to growing your provider base of psychiatrists who can provide free healthcare for those with mental health issues? And they said, "Yes." And that was a big piece of their grant application, was actually growing from one to, I think, five psychiatrists or, you know, therapists who could prescribe medication in particular. That's really the missing piece, and it's a real crisis proportions in our community. So I guess, as supervisor, I'm sitting here saying, as long as you can, you know, respect this line, and we kind of had that in writing, if they're fulfilling a deeply felt need in this area that is such a crisis area, and they can do it essentially with volunteers, and we're just hiring the outreach staff member to find the providers, they're also expanding dental, that's the other place, and particularly for undocumented folks in our community who do not have access to Medicaid and healthcare, the free clinics are really important, and dental and mental health are important holes that we need to fill. So for that, I, you know, saying, that's why I justify funding them, but we can follow up with that question with them.
Yeah, let's, I, and I'm not, I'm not adamantly opposed, I've just, you know, just count me as concerned, willing to be persuaded that the good far outweighs the concerning part.
And they did state in their application that they, that it's open to everybody.
Yeah. Oh, and I will say, I did, I looked up their form online for being a volunteer, and that does not ask any religious questions. So that, that gave me, you know, that helped me a little bit to be persuaded.
Mary Ellis, did you have some questions?
I did. I was trying to understand, as brief as possible, the homeless situation, and there's some new, so I said as brief as possible.
I have a whole presentation on that that's coming really soon, and it's gonna be long.
So, so we have some new people who are asking for the first intake service, right?
Yes, I'm probably the intake at Regional Plan Commission.
Okay, and then, so you have Regional Plan Commission, and the patchwork, I suppose, is what I'm trying to figure out here, because we have, we have Roseanne, or, I'm sorry, the other, I can't read. Rosecrance, thank you, that's not applying. So where is the funding coming from in terms of the, what's the name of the agency that's requesting funding for the...
Ciument's Emergency Shelter. So it's actually Courage Connection, Ciument's Emergency Shelter, and Champaign County Regional Plan Commission are all homeless providers who have requested money.
So those three entities are the ones that are in this package, so to speak?
Yeah, I'm just looking to see if, because Rosecrance is, Times is closing, as far as I understand, so we will now have transitional shelter, and, which is a whole other conversation we should have at some point. And GCAP did not apply this year, although they've applied in the past, and that's for a shelter for HIV-positive folks needing houses. So your question?
Okay. Yes, yeah. And then the small one is, and I don't have the, I don't have it printed out, but you had listed the goals or the kind of the guiding principles in terms of reviewing the applications. So there was the township supervisors' goals, but in addition, there was the council goals. The council goals that are listed there are not the ones that were passed. So those are part of the brainstorming session, but they were not the actual, not all of them are the ones that were passed.
Yeah, so these were council goals and priorities, they weren't the ones that, because I don't think any of these ended up in your top five.
Right.
But we got these from the mayor's office, and these actually came to you in conversation before we went, before we put the application out, and I don't know if you were at that meeting or not, Mary Ellis, but we basically confirmed with this body these priorities before going out on the application, so...
So not the guiding principles I'm not talking about, in terms of the review, right?
The number 10, we will prioritize programs that are aligned with Council Golden priorities and supervisor priorities, all of that.
Right, right. And as I said, it's a small point, but I'm just saying, in the, in the actual document that was sent around, it had exactly explicitly which council goals that you were referring to, and those were not the ones that were passed.
Okay.
And I can show it to you afterwards.
Okay. Yeah, these were pulled from the goals and priorities as they were moving target, that seemed to impact the social service funding. And each year, just so you know, the intention is, in January or February, for us to kind of set the priorities for this year, and then they go out with the application saying, "Here's the priorities." And then people respond to those priorities, and they may change as, you know, as the economy changes or as things shift in the community. Did you have other questions?
No, 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 thank you.
Were there any, we are at 6:51, we're making good time, any other questions? Bill?
I guess I'd just go back to the Big Brothers, Big Sisters case to ask that you checked to see if they were notified. And I know one of the guiding principles is preference will be given to previously-funded agencies with a strong performing track record. I don't know how we've measured that, but if we kept funding them year after year, you'd think with 20, 25 agencies, there could be some effort to make sure that if they hadn't gotten the application in with a couple of weeks or a week to go and the deadline, that they could be contacted. It's not that we're doing them a favor, we're giving people money to, you know, perform services, social services that we need. So if that's one of the services we need, I think there's, I know in past years, if agency, at least one time, since I've been on council, agency didn't get theirs in on time, they were given extra time. So if that's something that the committee of the three of you think would be useful to have that in the mix, I'd encourage you to contact Big Brothers, Big Sisters, see if they want to apply.
For this year?
Yep.
Okay. I guess I would just say, as a person who's written a lot of grants for a lot of agencies, like, you have your calendar and you know when the grants come up, and you have a contract, and they have an active contract with us, so every quarter, they're submitting documentation about that, and we've had the same cycle, and if anything, we were late this year. It is the case that there were a couple of applications that came in the next day, and we did include them, because we're Urbana, I mean, you know. So, so included, you know, a day, day late applications. I would have concerns with reaching out at this point and asking an agency, I feel like...
Okay, then not as for next year?
Yeah, certainly, we could...
Well, next year, I'd suggest maybe with a week to go in the process, if you could tell the council who's applied and who hasn't, so that if you don't have time to notify people, then we can notify them.
I'll just second that, that, yeah, if we can get some notification as to who has applied, so that we can, in case we perceive some significant omissions for whatever cause.
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, as you say, this is Urbana, we're, we're not hung up on process, we're hung up on doing the best thing that we can for our people.
Aaron?
I think that would be a great idea if we could also do that for minority businesses that don't get their applications in, or haven't gotten the notice that there's business that's being done by the city, and we should all take the same urgency to notify them that there's an opportunity for them to do business with the city of Champaign, I mean, city of Urbana. I think that would be great.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions or comments? Do we need a motion to adjourn? I will take a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I have moved that we adjourn.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who want to keep talking, say nay. That carries, and we'll have a quick break here, and in five minutes, convene as the town board.